The Powell School Board on Wednesday, March 19th. And we're going to start tonight with the presentation of the flag salute and a presentation from students. Todd?
Stand for the flag. Will you make this?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, our Odyssey of the Mine groups are going to perform for parents and visitors, so I'd like to welcome you here this evening and thank you for attending.
I'm just gonna give you a little introduction to Odyssey of the Mine. It's an international program and we've been competing at this statewide level for the past, this is our third year going up to states. And the idea is, it's all kid, everything they have to do it themselves. Their theme is kids' hands-on, adults' hands-off. So everything you see here, they have made, they've created, they have designed themselves. Now, we don't have either of our whole teams, because the team consists of five to seven students, and they're put in divisions according to their ages. It goes by whoever the oldest student that the division has to compete in. So we'll be competing in Division Two in both of our teams that you see here today. We also have two primary teams, and they'll be competing with us as well. The difference between the two teams is, we also have to compete in a spontaneous problem where they just present the kids either with materials or a problem, and they have so many minutes to solve the problem, and they get so many points. What we have to do, so we're just gonna, the kids are gonna tell you some of the components of what they're doing and what their whole theme is behind their problem. Their title was "The Not-So-Haunted House." Let me go get Selena.
Emily Briggs is absent, but she's a maid. Selena Harris is a mad scientist. I'm Madame Kiri. Angel's a wicked witch. Timmy's scolite skeleton, and Daniella's absent, but she's a narrator. The whole thing's technically about two girls dress up for Halloween and have scary adventures. Here's our scenery, and we use for sound effects. For the knocking, we use wood, and we have somebody knock on the wood to make the sound of a door. And then, for bones rattling, for scolite, it sounds like that. And then, the idea, sounds like this. And then, the explosion, and then, the surprise as the ending is not Halloween, it's April Fools.
Nice job.
We have our mad scientist coming to show you her costume, coming down the hallway. You can just wait one second.
A mad scientist.
Very nice, great job, and good luck. Good luck on Saturday. Thank you.
We will be graded on mostly the sound effects and our surprise, those are the two things that will weigh the heaviest.
Nice job. Very good.
Good luck.
Good luck, guys.
Thank you.
Todd, where is the state competition being held?
The board approved that trip last month, and it's near Brooklyn.
the driver's test to Eli.
Which is not here.
Yeah, he's absent. He has to do four tests.
He has to do a turn?
Turn, knock down cones, and deliver a package. And at the end, we made a dance floor, or we throw it out, like, we said the car would turn into a dance floor, and we throw the dance floor out. And the haunted house was made by George. The car was made by Ari. Ari, and the turn signal is Eli, and the cones were made by him. And this is-
Is the turn signal, which Ethan holds for Eli when he turns the car. And we have a spooky post office, which is big, so we couldn't bring it up, so.
Nice job. Very creative. Good luck.
A lot of thought's going into these projects. Are you looking on since October?
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move now to the reorganization part of the meeting. Nominations are open for Chair of the Powell School Board. May I have nominations?
I make the nomination, that's my chair.
Second.
Are there any further nominations for Chair of the Powell Board? Seeing none, I'll ask if you'd like to vote by acclamation, since there's only one nominee. And that just means you agree that it would be Cindy. Acclamation?
Yes.
Thank you. Cindy, you'll carry on with the nominations for the Chair and Clerk.
Thank you. Okay, now we need a nomination for Vice Chair. Someone for Vice Chair?
I nominate Ann.
We have a nomination and a second. Is there any other, anybody else hearing none?
All those in favor of nominating Angie as Vice Chair signify by raising your hand. Okay, it's unanimous. Okay, now the next thing we need, and the next position is the Clerk.
I nominate Tammy.
Okay, that's a nomination. Do we have-
Second.
Okay, is there any other nominations for Clerk? Anybody else wants it? All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All right, it's unanimous.
Cindy, it's typical now to do, before you do committee assignments, to do a motion for the officers, Chair and Vice Chair to sign the warrants when there are not regular meetings scheduled.
That's true. Okay, so we need a nomination to give permission to the Chair or Vice Chair.
Motion.
Second.
I make the motion.
You made the motion. Okay, the motion was made in second. Is there any discussion on that? All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand.
Thank you.
Okay. Should we, probably, we have other positions.
Yes, the committee assignments, Bruce has been coming to policy, correct, lately?
Angie's had policy.
Doug, I'm sorry. I'm in North Bennington, I'm in Powell tonight. Doug, have you been to our policy meetings? Angie, have you been coming for this?
It's hard for me to make it at 4:30.
Yeah, there's 4:30 on the first Monday of the month, so.
Doug, is that something you're interested in?
No.
No?
I'll tell you.
Okay. You gonna stay on it, Angie?
Yes, we certainly report back from policy.
Do you want to be on it?
I can't do 4:30.
I know. 4:30 is brutal.
It is brutal. Well, you know, maybe what Angie can do is talk to the committee, and maybe for, if it's really hard for, there might be other committee members that it's hard for them to come there at 4:30.
Yeah, we could certainly ask.
Might wanna try to move it to five.
Actually, I can take a poll by email and see. You did enjoy it, and we had good conversations when you were there, too.
Yeah, it's a very, it's one of the important things that the board needs.
Absolutely.
It's one of our obligations, actually. Okay.
And then, you have a technology committee at the building level that you usually have someone attend?
Yes.
Doug.
And I think Doug.
So you would like to continue?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thanks, Doug.
And then Cindy, you started to serve in Nicole's place for the teacher negotiations, and, you know, certainly we'd like to have you continue if that's fine with you and the rest of the board.
I feel like I'm being roped.
For the continuity.
Well, let me just ask, is there anyone on the board that would like to be on the teacher negotiation?
I would.
Oh, there is.
You would? Oh, great. They're actually, they're on now, I can give you the information as to when they're, they've been ongoing. They've been meeting Thursdays.
Thursdays at four o'clock.
At four o'clock, at Central Office, but then I think that one of them's gonna be, well, we'll get you the information, because it's either gonna be at Central Office or-
That might be a conflict, because the Central Office Tech Committee meets on Thursdays.
It's what?
Tech Committee meets on Thursdays.
Yes.
So it could be a conflict.
With?
The teacher negotiation, if they meet on Thursday.
What is it, what's the conflict?
The Tech Committee meets on-
Oh, it would be a conflict, then. It would. And really, we need to stick to the four o'clock Thursday time schedule, so, yeah, it would be a conflict, then.
So I can't do it.
All right, maybe another year.
Which week, which day of the week?
It's every Thursday.
For how long?
Every Thursday, right now.
It's usually a two hours.
For how many weeks?
Until the, until the contract is settled.
Yeah.
Right now, we're talking about the board team meetings, and then the meetings will be starting soon with the teachers. So Cindy, you'll continue?
Yes, I'll continue.
Thanks for your interest, Doug.
Want to do it?
No, I can't. I can do that more.
Yeah, thanks, Doug. Okay, and the other committee is the-
Food Service.
Food Service. Okay. And who did we have on the Food Service?
I was on it.
Would you care to remain?
No, I would not. It's a advisory. Why even go?
It's to represent our school.
It's an advisory.
It's a advisory. Sorry, what I saw, there was nothing. It's a advisory.
Yes, it's an advisory committee because two contracts, two contracts ago, Cindy, I can't remember. Prior to having the services of the Abbey Group, there was interest in having more local voice in the contract provisions with the third-party vendor, and that's how it started. And the advisory is actually written into whatever contract we write with our third-party vendor, in order that there's good communication between the schools and the boards about the meals served and how the program's running. And it has improved, I can just say. I think everybody knows.
How often do they need?
It's improved tremendously since Maureen O'Neill's taken over. It's once a month on the, yeah, it's actually not on a regular schedule.
No, it's all, yeah.
And roughly, what's the time?
Usually on a Wednesday.
3:30 in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Cindy, quick, a couple of teachers, I got one question.
Okay, I'll take it.
The teachers negotiating committee, that goes on for months, right? And the Tech Committee is once a month, Doug?
Yes.
Yes.
So why can't Cindy and Doug, because that's a heck of a commitment. So why can't we have two when they alternate and they back up each other?
They went, they went from there all the time, everything, it is.
Who can, I mean, that's brutal.
Well, what I can tell you, what I can tell you is that, from past practice, they like to have the same number of individuals on the board team as the teachers team, so it's the same number of people.
But what I'm saying is, Cindy and Doug would just communicate, and they would take turns showing up, so it's not a super burden on either one. And since Doug only has a conflict for one meeting-
There'll be communications with the board anyway.
It would take some pressure off of Cindy.
About it. So, yeah, sure, we can, we can-
Well, what does Doug and Cindy think is most important?
I don't mind doing it. If, I mean, we, I'm more concerned with having representation from Powell on any of these committees. I think it means a lot. And if Doug can't do it, then I, I'll take it. It's not a big deal. If I can't make it, he'll be like an alternate. How's that, Doug?
It's fine.
Okay.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. So, Policy Tech. Now, we're not, how about the ESP? Are we going back real soon on that?
Yes, you've been serving on that, and probably at least should continue till the summer.
When do we go back? When does that open up?
Yeah, well, you've got a couple of years now, but because of the health, it'll open each year. And then there's the administrators' negotiation, but that's a five-year contract right now.
Yeah, so we don't have to worry about that one.
You don't need to appoint anyone.
Okay. No, we don't. Right, not this year.
You'll be asked for representation at the time they open for health.
Right, so we don't have to worry about that. Okay, so we have the policies, cover tech, teacher negotiation, the food service, and the ESP.
And who's Food Service?
Food Service. I am.
You are, okay.
And then Doug is alternate.
Yep.
Okay, and we have the SVSU.
Yes, you need two representatives and one vote, and then, or two separate votes, and then an alternate.
An alternate.
I'd like to, I'd like to continue on that.
Okay, Jim?
Do you want to say, honey, you want to get on?
No, I'll stay for another ear-
Are you sure?
Yes. Are you the alternate?
Yep.
Okay, so it's, it's Jim and Cindy. Gee whiz, I should get my name on this list even more. Hey, he's big bucks, I mean, Angie's gonna be the alternate.
Angie.
Okay. Doug, did you want to be alternate?
I don't think so.
No? Okay, I just want to make sure I offer to you.
No, that's fine, thanks, appreciate it.
Okay. That should cover it.
It does.
I'm running out of ink, so we can't write my name anymore.
Yep, that's the end.
Okay, so we are down to public comments. Is there any public comments?
I just have something real quick, because a couple people have asked me about the Vermont Lottery and the education fund. I think it was you, was it you that asked me?
No.
Somebody asked me.
But I would've, I thought of it.
Okay, since the first ticket was sold in 1978, they produced over $1.6 billion in sales. One billion of that has returned to the players. $91 million has gone back to local communities and lottery agents and forms of commission. $430 million have gone to the Vermont State for Education Fund since 1999. Last year, $22 million went to the Vermont Education Fund, and that paid for 1,300 Vermont students. That paid for the teachers, any sports, in-school, after-school. So I just thought I'd let everybody know. Okay?
Interesting.
I mean, it sounds like a lot of money, but when it only does 1,300 students?
I wonder where the 1,300 students are, up north?
It's distributed as part of the five.
It goes in the general plot.
But $22 million is a lot of money, and then you break it down to 1,300 students.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That was very good. Thank you very much for sharing that.
Somebody asked me, so.
Okay. Under personnel, no personnel. Okay. Finance. Any questions on finance?
Yeah, just under the action items, later.
Okay. Now, we're down to the action items. We have Treasury's report. Is there any questions on the Treasury's report? Seeing none, how about the budget transfers? We have none. Okay. All right, facilities. Is this, whoever want to bring Rich in, or?
Or did you want to do that later on, as far as-
Red Cross.
No, as far as executive session, or no? I mean, Rich, if you wanted to share your, you know, your books and things that you've been doing with us here at Powell School, and I know the board had suggested you come to the meeting and share those.
Okay.
The many things that you do here at Powell.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank Judy Watson. She started the four of those. She started the manual. When I was out for my recovery, we had some situations that we didn't know about, so Judy spent a lot of time putting the book together on everything that's in this building. So I want to thank her, and of course, I've collaborated with her a little bit. But I've made a copy for the board. Only one copy, I'm sorry. And if you glance through it, you'll see that the beginning is really all the functions within the building. We talk about the air conditioners, the air handle units, the alarms, the auto dollars, the asbestos, the bells, the boilers, the burglar alarm, chlorinator, circulator, circuit breakers, clocks, coolers, doors, door holders, electric voltage, electric meters, elevator, emergency lights, exhaust fans, exterior lights, fire alarm system, fire drills, fire extinguishers, freezer, fuel oil generator, hazmat, head start building, heat recovery units, heating and ventilation system, and the Honeywell heating system, which is the oil system, and some of the inspections that need to be done. Also, we covered the intercom, the interior lighting, the keys, the kitchen, the lawn mowing, the lunch tables, the P.A. system, the payroll, propane tanks, radios, roof, security company, septic system, sinks, snow plowing, sound system, sprinklers, sump pumps, surveillance cameras, telephones, unit vents, water meter, water softener, water storage tanks, water testing and sampling, the well and the windows. So, they're all in here. And I don't think we should spend a lot of time talking about it.
No.
No, well, but this is, this is good.
Now, the other thing that we've done, or I've done, is put together a maintenance checklist. And it's basically the things that need to be done, and the frequency that they should be done. And I've got a copy for Todd and the board.
Is this a new list, or something that you're already been using? The maintenance checklist? Is that?
Yep. Some of those are the frequencies that are done. Some are done daily.
No, my question, is this a new list, or is this what you have been doing?
This is what I've been doing. This is part of my job function.
Okay. If we could get copies for all the board members, is it on the list? I'd appreciate it.
I can do that.
Okay.
Right now, we're currently staffed for 13 hours of janitorial service, you know, those being Lee and Jose. We have an eight, an eight-hour and a five-hour, and we're full-time employees. I am an eight-hour position, days, full-time.
Wait a minute, Doug. Can you go back to the eight-hour? It said nightly. I was confused. Is this one?
This is where he put in his, this is the job descriptions.
Yeah, but what, you got here, job description, eight-hour night custodian.
Pardon me?
Let's see.
So you do have, so he is-
That is the eight-hour position, so that would be Lee.
All right, Lee is eight hours?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
And those are some of his job functions.
And Jose, and Jose is five.
Jose is five hours.
Jose is five hours.
Okay.
All right. That's good.
Now, if you look at that closely, you're gonna see, not all rooms get mopped every day. We spot mop. I, myself, personally feel that you really need two eight-hour positions for a janitor to make it, because really, three hours of my time, I'm a janitor. So really, you really need that support, in my opinion, in the janitorial position.
Well, actually, we are going to sit down at some point, probably on the planet for next month, and we need to come up with a job description. We did get one from Central Office, and I really would like the H.R. person to be involved in the board, and we can-
And we had talked about that last meeting, and everybody got the current ones that are in place in other districts.
Right.
And giving me feedback, as well as Joy's feedback, and Joy and I would then collaborate to come up with a job description for Powell.
Right, okay. So maybe we can put that-
And speaking of job descriptions, I tried to go in to attach the job descriptions through the custodial.
Yep.
As far as the SVSU, there are no custodians in the human resource file.
Quote titles, you're saying, yeah, because I think they're called maintenance directors or something.
There's a maintenance worker and a maintenance supervisor, as far as a job title.
I think what we want to do is, more or less, look at what we, what BSD has, and look at what we have, and maybe come up with something that fits our building.
Right.
You know, I think that would make more sense. Does the board feel that way?
Yes.
We want to make sure it's more of an example.
We're not obligated to follow the SVSU job descriptions. We can make our own, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, make it fit.
Now, the one problem that we have that makes us different is that we're required to test our water by the state.
Yes.
So that's a real big stickler, in that you have to have certification by the state in order to monitor our water. And that's a daily monitoring.
What's the process for getting certification?
Certification is a test. It's very rigorous. Judy let hers lapse, and she went back to take it, and it was quite challenging. It's typically a three-hour test. The state only provides it twice a year, in May and October.
How do you prepare for the test?
I took it on the run. There is, there is a pre-test going on, and I think I forwarded that to Todd at some time next month, is that correct?
My question was, suppose I wanted to take the test, what would I do to get ready to take the test?
Buy the booklet. And then, what this is, is a pre-test. They go over all the things that are gonna be on the test. It's like a practice thing. They don't tell you specifically everything that's on the test, but you do different segments that are part of the test.
So what I'm getting at, in order to get ready for that test, and take the test, and get qualified, is a two-days' worth of work, three-days' worth of work, three-hours' worth of work?
Well, it depends on the individual.
Yeah.
It's just a day or two of effort.
How fast you can read and retain, probably.
Yeah. It's about 160 questions. I took it now 10 years ago. And see, I just keep my certification up by taking renewed credits.
So, so-
I need 12 credits every, every three years to maintain my license. So I take extra.
So once you get your license-
Once you get it-
Then it's, what, every three years?
Every three years, you have to renew it by taking continuing courses on it.
Rich, are you the only one who has the certification right now?
Judy has the certification, because when I was out, by federal law, you're supposed to have someone on-site assigned to monitor the water. In fact, right now, Old Hill is in violation. They're on a waiver. They pay somebody to come in and monitor their water.
Okay.
Their problem over there is they don't have enough capacity to chlorinate their water, or to-
We're working on it, mister, we're working on it.
So if Todd hires somebody, and he's the most perfect custodian, or whatever we're calling the job, and he doesn't have the certification, it's just a matter of a day or two, Todd, to-
If the board hires someone, what, Jim?
Yeah.
If we hire, whoever hires them, if we hire somebody, okay, at your direction, okay, yeah. The only, only thing lacking is this water certification. It's not a big process to get it. It's-
Well, with Judy being on-site, we would have somebody here in the interim, but we would want that person to get their certification.
Exactly.
But it wouldn't be a job, it wouldn't be a-
Pre-requisite, or?
Yeah.
No, they could, they could obtain certification.
Quickly.
But it should be a prerequisite, that they have to be able to obtain it. We need somebody that-
Right.
If you fail it seven times.
Yeah, and that, and that's another thing. Once we come up with a job description, we can do a, what did I just call it? An RFP. And when we do the RFP, I think that's probably something we can put in. But the H.R. person will help us.
They must get certification within 90 days, that type of thing.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Rich. A lot of questions for a simple answer.
I don't, I don't want to blow my, my horn, but somebody needs to be quite computer-verse in order to run the heating system. That runs on a- That runs on a, uh, a Windows program. It's written in DOS. I mean, you have to be somewhat versed with it. It's quite complicated, believe it or not.
We can always get some of the students as consultants. My grandkids are, I can't believe what they know about computers. These kids at Powell are really sharp with computers.
Actually, I, I was hoping that you would be involved with us when we do sit down and do the, um, R F. P., the description of the job. You know, you can give us your input. You've been here a long time. I apologize personally to you because I didn't put it in the book. I didn't, wasn't aware that you were retiring, or when I wrote the letter in the town report for the school, I would've mentioned that.
I know you would've.
But I, uh...
I just want to thank you for supporting me. I mean, we've come a long ways in ten years.
That's right, we have.
Yeah, and I certainly wouldn't want to see anything change.
Right, and I think that's why it's important that you, if you're willing to work with us, so we can set the next, for the next, you know, person to come in and make sure that we're on the right path.
Yeah.
We don't want to take one step forward and three back.
Right. Now, the other thing to add to the certification, the way I understand it is, if you own a building that was, uh, built before nineteen seventy-eight, and you know that you have lead paint, you need to be, uh, certified in, in renovation. You need to know how to handle the lead paint. I have a federal certificate that I've taken, and Judy also holds one. Now, when I talked to Jim, Jim Marsden, he said, "I don't have to worry about it, 'cause I don't have any old schools." So, uh, but...
Were we ever tested for that?
Oh, yeah, I went, I went for training.
No, I, I don't, you know, I mean, I mean, the building itself, I, we painted it.
Yeah, it's all sealed. I mean, it's all contained. But in order to allow a contractor to come in and start doing demolition work, you have to have somebody here to oversee that, so that they're not creating a hazard.
Oh, I see.
So that, that's what my training is.
Is that why we had Jim Gilbert, our health officer, here one time to oversee a project?
That might've been, that might've been. This was, I want to say that I got my license or my certification about three years ago. And that's an E P. A. So when you see people all painting or outside their house and they're scraping, if they're not containing that lead, they're, they're violating the law. But, uh, the other thing you need to know is asbestos abatement. We only have a, a small portion of asbestos left in the building, and that has to be, I have to be aware of it, and we monitor it every year.
It, it would be helpful to the board if, like, you're starting to, to name up these, these items. Could you make a list of that so that we...
Sure, sure, I've got a probably, yeah, I've probably got it.
We really would appreciate that, 'cause we want to do it all right. We want to make sure that we got all our Ts crossed, we got it.
Yeah, I'd be more than glad to, more than glad.
All right.
So the other thing I think I've included in there is another, uh, portion of my job is the summer cleaning of the building.
Yes.
And I have gone through, and we got documented. I try to empower people. I'm fortunate again that I've got some very good cleaners. We've recognized them. And I've empowered them, and they know it. The one thing that Vermont has is that they went to an all-green cleaning chemical, so in other words, you can't use any zinc.
Yeah.
So last year, we went through and we got rid of all the old wax, anything we knew that can, contains zinc, and we documented it, so we know what we got, so...
So we're all green now?
And of course, with anything else, a green product, you have to pay twenty percent more for it. I think I passed on to the board that the prices are gonna go up because the product is different.
Isn't that crazy? How about purple? Can we get purple?
What's that now?
I asked if we could get purple instead of green. Just kidding.
So I think I've done documentation. I think we've got everything captured.
Excellent.
I mean, more than glad to help.
Yep, and those are kept in your office?
Yes, this one, this one's, uh, in the file downstairs.
Okay.
And Todd's got one.
I'll make copies of both of these that you had said for the board members. And Cindy, you had mentioned in your letter, um, Rich's retirement was not recognized, but I believe in my letter it was.
Yes, it was, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
While everyone's here, I think I passed along the capital improvement projects for the summer. Have you had a chance to look at that or discuss it? Things we want to do.
Okay, we did discuss...
It's, it's in the budget, whatever is...
No, we, well, you know, we've talked two, three different items and stuff. I, I'm not sure. We talked about the hot water.
Yeah, the kitchen and the hot water, the doors, the window, or the doors now. There are no more windows.
Right.
Yeah, and then the closing in the front. We need to, at some point, I need direction on who I should con, are we gonna do this, or are we gonna do that?
So you could put that on next month's agenda?
Yeah, I think what has happened is you sent out the email, and I wasn't sure if there was a discussion at budget time of possibly trying to get more than what you had on your list done. And so I think my philosophy was to have a list of everything sent to the board, and then maybe next week, or next meeting, decide if you want to do just a portion of them, or if you want to do as many as you can, instead of having the inflation increase. And this way, in my opinion, Rich is available at that time to oversee and just make sure what has been having, what has been done will continue to be done this, this summer.
I think that's a wise way to, to move it.
Yeah.
Then we'll know where our money is and what we've got to move with.
And I, um, I, I was talking to Jerry Prue today, and I wasn't sure, I asked him, they're doing, um, some renovation or security, um, items up at the Molly Stark School. And they had an outside firm kind of draw up some plans just to make sure that it was something that the building would need. And he said that if that is something that the board would like, um, I can get the name and pass it on, um, instead of maybe just doing some kind of a wall, but maybe having some kind of drawing, so that we know that what, what's happening is gonna be something that'll last for years and what we want for the year.
For the entryway.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
And just another thing, I know as of...
I think that's a great idea.
I know as of now, the board has not acted on Rich's letter, um, for retirement. I know it was presented to the board, but I don't believe that...
We voted on it?
That I don't believe that you all voted on it.
I don't remember.
Because I know that there was a proposal in there too about Rich taking a, a look at another, um, possible six months. But that was something that the board still needs to discuss and maybe accept his letter of resignation at some point, but I know, I don't believe that we've acted on it.
We did, okay. Well, um...
Maybe, maybe next month along with...
I was gonna say April. We're gonna have, and we'll know more about, I, I just don't want to make decisions now without seeing the whole picture.
Sure.
You know, but you're right, we, well, maybe we won't accept it. The state only ten years, though.
Thank you, Rich.
All right, thank you very much. You've really given us a lot of information here. Okay, so, um, consent agenda or the motion?
I'm sorry.
Consent agenda?
Consent agenda?
So moved.
Need a motion? Need a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Doug, do you have any questions on it?
No.
All right, seeing, seeing, hearing, or... Are those later than consent agenda? Please signify by raising your hand. It's unanimous. Okay. Um, we have no policies. Okay, uh, so we'll go right to the principal's report.
Okay, March the first, we did have the Red Cross training here, Larry Kupferman, as well as, um, I think there were nine or ten members of the community and our school staff that attended. On Monday, the twenty-fourth, we took a look at where we would put the Red Cross supplies, the cots and the blankets. And we do have room underneath our stage. So on Monday, the twenty-fourth, at three fifteen, they'll be delivered and they'll be stored under, under the stage.
That's where the chairs are and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay, brilliant. Excellent.
Um, a couple other items are March Mathness Luau Event. Last Thursday evening was very successful, and I want to thank Cindy Duplessis, our math lab teacher in the audience here, as well as many of our teachers and staff. Put forth third time that evening, and it was a great success, and many, uh, community members and students, uh, attended that, uh, that event, and it was very successful.
Very good.
Um, here at the building level, we're continuing our work with Maura Hart, and, uh, she was here last month, of course, on our school improvement plan, and we're continuing with that. And an upcoming event that we're looking forward to on April second is our second annual Career Day Fair, where the community members are invited to our school, and classes are rotated throughout, um, the day to hear about their professions and, and learn about jobs. Our fifth and sixth graders will be on a field trip that day to the C D. C. as well as, um, uh, Southern Vermont College.
So is that the whole day or is there a certain time?
It is throughout the day, yes.
April second?
April second. You're all invited to come and hear those presentations as well. And I think that's it.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Very good. I'm, I'm glad that we found a spot to put the supplies.
Yes, I am too, in here, in our own building, or if not somewhere else.
Right.
Or have to build anything or anything like that.
Um, once again, we have vacation in April, so we need to move our board meeting. Most of the time, we move it up, so it would be the ninth, the second Wednesday is, how does that, um, work with the board members?
It's also the meeting night of, um, North Bennington and Shaftesbury, but I think you'll be fine, because North Bennington does not meet in April, so you should be fine.
Okay, so is that, uh, is that okay?
At five thirty.
At five thirty?
It's five, I mean.
You're, you're, are you interested in changing the time? No? Okay, good, neither am I.
How about the date?
The date is, uh...
No, no, the day, actual day itself.
The date, it's Tuesday, uh, Wednesday.
Yeah, it's a bad day for me, unfortunately.
The second one?
Yeah.
It's difficult, 'cause we have two other boards that meet that, at Wednesday, the second.
Well...
Not in April.
The fourth, the fourth is S V. S U., so we can't go to the fourth.
And it, yeah, that's right.
Just asking, that's all. You can't, you can't.
So the first Wednesday of the month is, um, Woodford and B S. D. Second is North Bennington and Shaftesbury. Third is Powell and M A. U., and then the fourth is S V. S U.
Would a different time help, Doug, on the ninth?
No, it's gotta be different day.
Day, different day.
Yeah.
It's a conflict of the date.
So Tuesday would be okay?
Yeah, any day would, any day would. Saturday, Sunday, it doesn't matter, but Wednesday's just a bad day.
Okay, what is the Tuesday? Look, is, how is the, um...
Tuesday the eighth?
Saturday?
In April, you're fine on the second Wednesday. It's just if you permanently want to move your meetings.
No, we're not permanently moving. We're only moving it because of vacation.
Okay, so Wednesday is fine, unless...
Yeah, but Doug, oh, Doug has a conflict. I misunderstood. It's okay.
I'm, I'm the problem.
I, I thought you were asking for a permanent change.
No, 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 no.
No, I, I was...
We've been on, we've been on Wednesday too many years. I'll forget if we change it.
Yeah, no.
Okay, so for the month of April, we'll do it on the eighth.
You can't do it?
I, I just, I realize I can't do it.
You can do it on Tuesday?
Yeah, I got double conflict, before and after.
Uh, what about Thursday, the tenth?
That should be good.
That's fine with me.
Thursday?
Thursday? All right, so...
Five thirty.
Five thirty. On the tenth.
It's a Thursday. Better write that down.
It is a Thursday, and I will, um, I have everyone's email. I try very hard to remind everybody, so it will, you won't have to worry about Tuesday, Wednesday. It'll be Thursday.
Thursday.
Todd, Todd, you'll, you'll talk to Rich? He'll have ready for Thursday for the building stuff?
I, um, have been, I know I had a whole list, and I think I left the list on the dining room table. One of the things I remember on the list is, um, I got an email from Bill Batzow about the buses traveling to Dorset. Uh, one of the things, he said that the committee, the drafter of that program, was going to meet with Mr. Cor, Representative Corcoran, and the chair of that committee. And he asked that we send him, I told him it was a hardship for us to travel three times to Dorset with five buses. And so I got, I got in touch with Joel, and he calculated everything out for me. And I'm going to email it, when I get home, gonna email it to, to Bill. What we're asking for, instead of doing the inspections three times a year, is dropping it back to two. But the most, what I found out from doing research is, the state of New York and the state of Massachusetts have what they call a inspector, state inspector. So I ran that through Bill too, and I thought maybe the legislators can come up with a, a state inspector, which would be... From what I calculated, the difference in what we used to pay driving just to Bennington and now driving to Dorset, we are paying, uh, close to nineteen hundred and forty dollars more. And I reminded him that our governor is leaning on the board members to save money. And so, um, I thought that would help if I threw that in there. And so he's, um, as soon as I sent him the information as to what the difference is, um, he'll have more information to work with on this committee.
So the state inspector would come on-site to...
On-site, yes, that's what they do.
That would be so much easier.
Oh, much easier, and we would be able to save money. And it's hard for, uh, Joel and Rose, because they both have the farm to run. And I wouldn't want to throw stones in their path to make them say, "We can't do this anymore," and, you know, "They're too valuable to us." So that's the update on the, the bus issue. And that's all I believe I have for that. 'Cause the rest I left home on piece of paper. I'll do it next month. Okay, now, superintendent.
I have two, uh, calendar items. The legislative breakfast is going to be held this coming Monday, the twenty-fourth, at seven forty-five A. M. at the supervisory union offices. So it's very important that, um, board members attend and administrators that are able, uh, because bills have crossed over, and we'll get a good sense of where bills that are currently in the legislature are. Also, please register for the Vermont School Boards Association workshop called "The Essential Work of School Boards." It's being held here in Bennington at the C D. C. at five o'clock on March thirty-first. And you can go to the website and just register right on the website. And we're really encouraging, uh, all board members, not just new members of the board, to attend, and there will be a light dinner that's served.
And it's at five o'clock?
Five o'clock. It's always a very, very good training.
Yeah, I recommend, I recommend that new, new board members attend it. I think that's really important.
Yes, it is.
Is, is there a webinar substitute, I heard?
They do have on their website online trainings. You can go right on, they're free. And we have a DVD library of others that you can borrow. You can just call Mary Lee and borrow them.
Will it be the same as the thirty-first?
Some of it will, yes. You gain a lot, though, having other S V. S U. and, um, Bennington, Rutland Supervisory Union people there, Arlington. And then I have a brief executive session. If we could move to, um, that executive session for personnel and student matters.
So moved.
Okay, before we move that, is there any other to come before the board? Okay.
How about the two F Y. Is? But just, uh...
Yeah, the F Y. Is, is, yep, the student enrollment for March is enclosed, and, uh, the budget status report. Any discussion on either one of those?
Do you have the consent agenda, Cindy?
Do we have a C F. O. report?
Did you take the consent agenda already?
Yes, we did, and it's all signed, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we...
So I make a motion to go into executive session for personal matter?
Okay, before we do that, I just, I did forget one thing. We are, um, we now have our, um, our beloved Tammy, who takes minutes for us, is now a board member. So now we are in need of a recorder. I guess that's what they call you, right?
Yes.
I mean, you've been called worse, but that's okay. So, if anybody is interested, please, uh, feel free to contact me, Cindy Brownella, eight-two-three-five-six-five-six. We meet once a month. We meet on, uh, third Wednesday, unless there's a vacation, then we move it, but otherwise, um, we, excuse me? Oh, yes, it's definitely, yeah, you got to stipend for doing it. We don't ask you to do it for free. So if anyone out there is interested in taking minutes for this, uh, this board, uh, please feel free to comment. Thank you. And now we're going to executive session.
Cindy, before we do, do we have a chief financial officer report?
No.
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 Okay.
With the chief.
I made a motion to go into executive session.